We are on the air and good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call Diana.
Here.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Ziski.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay, and we have new Democrat Herald reporter.
Jennifer.
Yes, and so Jennifer Moody, but I mean, she's been with the DH for a long time, so you get the duties this evening, so welcome. And this looks like it might be a quick meeting for you, too. Okay, is there anyone from business from the public? CNN and Council, we have adoption of the resolution, and this is on page 11. And does staff want to say anything on this item? Wes, if you're down on it?
I have a lot to say, obviously. Yes, this is just the new House Bill 2662, which gives cities some additional regulatory authority over residential properties that are currently vacant. I think the inspiration behind the legislation was the number of bank-owned properties that have essentially been let go. I have a good example immediately next door to me. The house next door to mine has been vacant for about, ooh, I'd say at least three, maybe four years. And during most of that time, I've just mowed the lawn because I didn't want it a mess next door. And it's a small one, so it's not some huge sacrifice on my part. But I think a lot of people are dealing with similar things in neighborhoods around the city. This gives us an additional tool to go to the banks and have them appropriately care for the properties that they own.
And if I could supplement, one irony is that this law gives the city a priority lien in the event that we have to do cleanup or abatement. We do not have that authority when we exercise our rights against properties that are, in fact, still owner-occupied. And so it's nice to have the authority in this case, but it would be a lot nicer if the legislature extended that in all situations where we have to do cleanup abatement. Currently, what happens is when we exercise those functions, we do it with public money, and we hope that we will eventually get repaid. But our lien is subordinate to that of the lender, and if the lender forecloses the property, we normally lose our lien. So that is something we will not be subject to under this new law, and I wish it could be extended. Principally, what the resolution does is makes it clear that the manager has authority to take the acts and steps necessary to implement the law in Albany.
Okay, all right. Questions, Dick?
Yes, I do. Not on this so much, but I'm wondering, houses sit foreclosed for, well, as in your case, year after year. And is there any indication that that house is for sale anyplace?
None.
I've got the same situation in my neighborhood. Is there some way we can encourage whoever owns the house, whether it be a bank or whatever, to try and get the house sold?
Well, I mean, we could always encourage. I mean, we could write letters, but we don't, to the best of my knowledge, we have no authority, which, you know, to force people to do anything. And my experience with encouraging is that particularly when it comes to these kinds of properties has not been very successful.
We will have better authority, however, because of this new law, to require these properties to be well-maintained. And that means that absentee lenders are going to have to be spending money on these properties, not just for taxes, but for maintenance as well. And to the extent that they have to spend money, that creates an economic incentive to resell the properties.
Yeah, well, when they turn into houses like this, they're blight on the neighborhood.
Yeah, we recently had a case over on Gary Court where you had people squatting in a bank-owned property, and they were throwing, you know, just household waste into the backyard. And this had gone on for an extended period of time. We'd tried, we'd cited the people that were squatting. We're not having any luck with getting it cleaned up. And the neighbor, one of the neighbors had a very legitimate complaint. We ended up, you know, hiring a contractor to go in and clean it up, just because, you know, it was, in my opinion, it was a dangerous situation where there was potential for disease, spread of disease, and rodents and the like. So, yeah, we have had to deal with a number of those properties.
So in that case, do we just eat the bill?
Well, we will put a lien on the property. Whether or not that one will be successful or not, I don't know.
We will still have a challenge with properties that are lost in a limbo of foreclosure. The Mattney property that the city fire department, that the city acquired for the fire department is an example of a property where...
That was a Matlin property?
No, Mattney is the name of the last owners. And it was a situation where the house burned, the matter went into default, the lender began a foreclosure and didn't complete it. So we would not, in that circumstance, necessarily have the power of this law, because this law only applies in a circumstance where title is now vested in a lender who acquired the property through foreclosure. So, I mean, it's not a perfect remedy in all cases, but it's a very helpful tool. Absolutely.
Do some cities buy properties like this if they're in foreclosure? I would assume it's a lower price than the property would normally require.
I would say...
And then clean them up and sell them again?
I'm not aware of too many programs like that. I can't say for certain, Dick, whether in some parts of the country that's happening. I mean, we certainly, we bought the Mattney property in this case, but for, you know, for a specific reason. I would say if that's being done, it's being done pretty rarely, because most cities are not sitting on, you know, large chunks of money that they can, that invest in those kinds of properties. Nor are cities really set up to be sort of resale, real estate resale outfits. We just don't do that.
You don't want to get in that business?
Pardon?
You wouldn't particularly want to get into that business?
Well, you know, some cities actually did, and I can't speak for Albany, but Springfield did better, I think, than they, you know, back in the early, when they, we had the big recession back in the eighties. Springfield foreclosed, had to, and received a number of properties that had been included in local improvement districts, used as security in local improvement districts. And at the time, it was a pretty big burden to them, but I think over time, they were actually able to recoup a good share of the money that they initially lost, you know, through the sale price of the properties. And I think Albany did that to some extent with...
Yeah, we had a big chunk of property out in far south Albany.
Right. So I won't say we can't do it. I just say it's a difficult issue, and it's not what, you know, cities typically are set up to do.
Rich?
It would have been nice if we would have had a banker in the room. Your question about why banks sometimes do not put these things up for sale is, I asked that question of a banker here local, and it was explained to me that if they have them on the books, they can have them on the books at the price that they have listed in them. And if they sell them short, then they have to take a loss on paper. So some banks, quote unquote, hold on to them, keep them off the market, so that that can happen, so they don't lose money on their, yeah. I'm glad you made the explanation that we can do this for foreclosed, but not for the current stuff, because I, like many of, I'm sure everyone else got the, an email from Dustin Waggoner about his neighborhood. And unfortunately, this isn't going to fix that. I understand that it is in the system, and it's being talked about. That isn't the subject, but kind of a close one.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I would encourage the council, if we have a good experience with this over the course of the next year, perhaps when we talk to League of Oregon City Representatives about future legislative priorities, if this kind of a state statute could be extended to all types of nuisance abatement within cities to create priority liens, it would be a wonderful thing. And when you think about it, in Oregon right now, the typical priority lien is a mechanic's lien. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to waste your time, but if you've got, your lender has first position on your house, but if you have to hire a contractor to put a new roof on your house, and the homeowner doesn't pay the contractor, the contractor has a mechanic's lien for the work he did. That lien is prior to all liens, even the mortgage holders. And the theory behind that is because that workman added value, which added value both for the homeowner and for the lender. By the same token, when the city cleans up a disaster, as in the example that Wes was talking about, value has been added to the property. And I see no reason why the city shouldn't have a priority lien, much as a contractor would have in that circumstance, for improving the property. So the rationale is there. This new law is a step in the right direction with regard to the problem of foreclosed properties, but perhaps it could be a model with our legislators to another step that would give us authority to have priority liens on all nuisance abatements. If that were the case, there would be an awful lot we could do.
Any other questions, Bessie?
One question is, Jim, this is a state law, so we still have to have a resolution for Albany, or is it just kind of redundant?
The state law talks about the local government can do this and the local government can do that, but it doesn't designate who in the local government is going to act to implement the requirements of the law. For example, there are requirements of notice, there are requirements for public hearings, contents of notice isn't spelled out, some of the timing isn't spelled out. And so you need to have someone designated with authority to act for the local government to employ the due process procedures that are necessary to make it legal. The logical step, of course, is to designate the city manager as the one responsible to implement the ordinance in Albany, and he or she will do so with the advice of the city attorney. And you don't need to spell out all the procedures. You can apply them on a case-by-case basis as necessary.
Yeah, I kind of thought that was what it was, but I wasn't sure. And the second thing is, with all the posting of the notices that are required, and I mean, this is all well and good, but is it going to be enforceable? I mean, we can't force them to...
Absolutely. This is very enforceable, because first of all, all of the administrative costs that the city incurs can be added to the lien in addition to the amount that the city spends having it cleaned up. So what will happen is, if there is a poorly maintained property, the city gives the appropriate notices to the parties entitled to receive them. If that doesn't solve the problem, the city hires contractors to go do the work and clean it up, and the price of that work, plus the city's administrative charge, is made a priority lien on the property. Unless we have a property in Albany that isn't worth the few hundred to thousand dollars or so that this would take, we're going to get paid. Because if we have a priority lien, we are the first ones paid when the property sells. And if we don't want to wait, we can foreclose our lien in order to make sure we get paid. So a priority lien will give the city real clout, so that when we give those notices to property owners, absentee land owners, the word will get out that we have the tool to back it up.
I was just, I was going more toward the foreclosing owner, lender, or agent to post a durable notice including contact information on the vacant property. I mean, I guess, apparently Marilyn or somebody, you know, finds out who the owner is, you know, and then I guess you can go backwards and maybe find the bank, but I just want, I want to know if that's going to be doable.
Well, you know, you bring up a very good point, Counselor Johnson. We have not got experience yet working through the law, because it's a brand-new law. And as with so many things, you can write a law, and then when you come to actually implementing it, you find problems you hadn't anticipated. I am optimistic we can work through those problems and make this law work, though.
If I can just add, we were getting a little bit of experience already. I think the signature, the governor's signature was not quite even dry when we got our first call from a company in Minnesota or somewhere wanting to know what size the durable notices should be. They make signs. They were aware of it, of the law happening in other places around the country in addition to Oregon. We've also had calls, proactive calls from some lenders, or realtors who represent lenders, saying, "We are responsible for this property. What do you need us to do to comply with the law?" Yeah, before we've ever, we've gotten this far. So they're aware of it, and I drove by one today. The first one to contact me, it was a house that we'd had on our tall grass list for the last couple of years. And the woman called me a couple of times, said, "We've got the notice on the house. We're sending contractors out to figure out what it's going to take to clean it up, and we'll have it done by the end of the week." And it's done. It's done, and the notice is in the window, and I'm pretty pleased about that.
Yeah, I'd say. All right, thank you.
Foreclosing a lien means we send them a bill?
No, foreclosing the lien would mean that we would take it to court and essentially order, get the court to issue an order selling the property for the amount of our lien. And if nobody else bid more than our lien, we'd own the property. Somebody, you know, if you had a thousand-dollar lien on a fifty-thousand-dollar property, somebody else, like the bank, who's secondary to us, would, in that example, certainly pay us off, because otherwise, the bank would lose the property. A junior lien holder is subject to having their lien eliminated and their claim eliminated if they don't pay off the first lien holder in that circumstance. By getting the status of priority or first lien holder, you're in the driver's seat.
All right, Ray?
I move we adopt the resolution implementing Oregon House Bill 2662 to address residential blight arising from lender neglect of vacant foreclosed properties.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next on page 12 is the resolution for accepting the abstract of votes. This would be on the measure 22119. On the dius, you have a replacement resolution, and it's just, the vote numbers are just a little bit, I think, six for the yes difference and one on the others. So that would be replacing page 12.
We adopt the resolution accepting the abstract of votes regarding the ballots.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, now the first reading.
An ordinance of Albany, Lynn and Benton Counties, Oregon, amending the City of Albany City Charter as approved by the electors of the City of Albany at the September 17th, 2013 special election, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion. The ordinance be read a second time, title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance of Albany, Lynn and Benton Counties, Oregon, amending the City of Albany City Charter as approved by the electors of the City of Albany at the September 17th, 2013 special election, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, the, there's a typo on the ordinance. It says the whereas, the first whereas. It says at the September 17th, 20103.
There it is!
Oh, yes.
So you have a motion to amend the ordinance to correct that to 2013, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's amended?
Well, you ought to vote on the amendment.
Okay, so you have the first and the second, Diana, for the amendment.
[inaudible].
Right. Oh, no, for the amendment. I think it was Ray?
Second.
Ray was the second. Who was the most?
I made the amendment.
Ray made the amendment. Floyd was the second. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Now you'll be voting on the amended ordinance.
Yes, so now, any discussion on the amended ordinance? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is adoption of the consent calendar. Is there any items that you'd like to have pulled off this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, that's our agenda items. Next is business from the council. And Rich, anything?
I do have an item. I've been listening to the council, listening to staff, listening to fire chief and police chief, and it is my opinion that everybody involved is on board for doing the very best job we can do in protecting the public's money when it comes to the new fire station, police station that people will vote on in November. To that end, I would like to see a committee formed of a couple, three counselors, and up to a total of no more than a dozen people from the public. Well, the total, counselors and public, no more than a dozen people, so it doesn't get unwieldy. People who are, for example, plumber, somebody in concrete, some, an electrician, to advise the council on making sure that we are doing the very best job we can do where the plans are concerned. And I would like to have that done prior to the election, because frankly, I think what it does is show that we are, in fact, trying to do the very best job we can do. That's what I'd like to see.
I have had a few people ask me about forming a kind of design committee, you know, for when it does pass, and over the facilities. So, I mean, this is something that I think we can look at. It might be a little premature to do that before the election, so it might be, we don't want to spend any sort of resources on that.
Not spending the resources, Mayor. I think you line up the people. First, you have to ask, you know, there are, there are people that I would put on the committee, because I know, you know, I know an electrician, or I know a plumber, and I, you know, people, contractors. But it points out that we are, in fact, doing the due diligence prior to the election. People would not meet before the election. I mean, there's no sense doing any work until after we know that there's work to do. However, pointing out that we're ready to do the work, I think, is, if nothing else, politically, a very good thought process to have prior to the election.
Ray?
I think the idea is great, but it just dawned on me, is there a potential conflict of interest by somebody that's a professional in that realm advising if they are possibly in the bidding process also?
I don't see that they would be if they were not on the committee when the bid was happening. I mean, if you're, if you're saying, "I think we ought to have T5 stuff for fluorescent lights, or T8s, or whatever they are," prior, that's one thing. It's, you know, we want my brand of that, that's something different.
I think that we need to explore that further. As I think of the law, advisory bodies are under the definition of law, public bodies. And so I think that the public ethics rules may well apply even to advisory bodies like that. And the question will be, and I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying we need to proceed carefully. I don't think you're proposing to act tonight necessarily, but perhaps, I'm just saying, we're going to have to explore that, because there may be an issue about whether they would be limited in their participation without declaring at least potential conflicts of interest. Do you heat the building with gas or electricity? Makes a difference.
I am, would not be asking for us to build a committee tonight. What I am asking is that the thought process be placed and that it come up quickly, because it is now October, you know, November is, is real close, and how close are we in between for a work session, for a, you know, it needs to be completed. If you're going to do it before the election, it needs to be completed at the next meeting.
Which probably could be challenging, and actually, the ballots are sent out next week, too. So, yeah. So, yeah. So, any other thoughts, Dick?
Yeah, it seems like most everybody carries some kind of load of controversy. And I know if I got to point to a committee, there would be those that say, "Well, look at that Olson guy. I don't, I don't think he's qualified to advise." And so I'm not going to vote for the, for the measure. So I would hate to have that happen, because through, you know, chance or accident, controversy might arise.
You mean vote for a committee? You're talking about, you said the measure. You'll be voting for the, the measure on the ballot, yeah.
If, if in voting for the measure, my appointment to a committee caused people to vote no, I think it'd be a real shame.
Floyd?
Sure, you know, I think this really fits into the council making the decision about, upon the success of the bond, how we're going to proceed, because there's several options for how we design, how do we bid. Wes has talked about doing a modified design build, where you bring a team together. I think ultimately, that type of information is valuable to the community, and this is an additional step that involves the citizenry in reviewing that design-build concept. And what it simply does is says that when the design build comes through, they have an opportunity to comment on the contents of that design build, and it reinforces that, you know, our objective is not to build the Taj Mahal, it is to build something very sound, functional, and long-lasting, you know, cost-effective. And so I, I think those two things need to be married together. We need to think through, upon the success, how we're going to proceed with the design and with the ultimate bidding process, and then how this group would be fitting in into that review opportunity. So I think the combination is very valuable, and I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, and I would, I agree with Floyd, and I think with Counselor Kellum as well, that what we've, what I've done in the past, when we've had a design-build process, is use the example of a fire station that we did in another city, where the fire chief put out the request for, the fire chief put together an internal team that put out a request for proposals, and then set up a committee composed of people from the community, people from the council, and, you know, from city staff. And then they reviewed the proposals that came back to them, and they select, they made a recommendation then to the council on which of them to accept, and, you know, it worked very well. So it's, that's, that's a pretty good, and I think, standard process. And, you know, the timing of it is, you know, it's your choice, but that's generally the way we would do it.
Ray?
I think one thing also, we've been always, or not always, but I mean, we've tried to get our arms around, and we've commented multiple times, on how do we get more public engagement? And this might be another way to help that process by inviting more people in different stages of the type of work they do. They may have never been asked to, you know, get involved. This might give them another opportunity to do so.
Thoughts? Okay, all right. Is that it? Rich?
Well, I guess the question is, are staff going to take that and come back and talk to us about how it might all fit together? Because I hate to just see it drop off the end of the table.
It's going to drop off the end of the table at this point.
We can come back with sort of a, maybe a rough process at the next council meeting. I'd ask both, John isn't here tonight, he had another obligation, but ask the fire chief and Mark, because he has a lot of experience in these kinds of things. Maybe the three of us can get together and come up with a kind of an outline of how, how we might proceed.
Do you want the work session on 21st, and then for the council meeting? Are you talking about just for the council meeting?
Your preference. We could, what's the, I don't know what the agenda looks like for the, for the work session on the...
21st is Lux.
And a couple of other things. There's probably time.
Okay, well, we can shoot for the work session if that's...
This is, this is not a new concept.
No, no.
I mean, lots of communities have used it, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
One of the keys to the success is when you put out the RFP to request the design-build team, you have to scope out what it is you're asking them to design-build. And for instance, you can say, "I want you to build a 50,000-square-foot building, and that's going to house X, and if you don't have some parameters on 50,000-square-foot building, you could get a 50,000-square-foot pole barn," as opposed to, you know, a 20-year or 40-year life structure. So the key will be in structuring the RFP.
Right. Okay.
That solves my problem.
We'll bring a proposal back then for the work session.
Okay, all right. Ray? Okay, Floyd?
No, thank you.
Okay, Messy?
Yeah, I do have, just a...
Yeah, I do have just a couple of quick things. On, on the dais tonight, instead of giving a report, I actually wrote out a report for, when I went to the League of Oregon Cities annual conference last weekend. And you can see that there are a lot of really, really good sessions. And I just want to, I'd like you all to read it because there are some real, real good things in it. But I attended a couple sessions that were geared toward ethics and social media. And I mentioned it to Jim about something that was discussed about emails and, and all the new social medias, you know, Facebook, Twitter, all this stuff. And he said that he could, might explain the, things like blogging and emails from our personal computers, things like that. But it was interesting to me that they were really adamant about if we get on the network with anybody, that it becomes a public record, or should be. So, I'll let you kind of explain.
Well, without going into any great length on this, the simple way to think about it is that this is not a, doesn't mean that you can't communicate with constituents, that you can't be as politically and socially active as you care to be. It simply means that there is an obligation to recognize that those communications are likely to be public records and that they must be archived so that they can then be available for public inspection. If you are, all of the common element to blogging, to social media, to all of these forms of communication is that they are done on your computer or your smartphone, which is of course just a smaller computer, and they are communicated via the internet. So, if you are communicating using a device that is a city device or a city account, those electronic documents will automatically be archived and maintained by the city. You won't have to do anything. Is that right, Marilyn? If it's a, they're using their city accounts?
Yes.
If you're not using your city account, if you are using a personal account and you are blogging, you are responding, you are communicating using Facebook or Twitter or God knows what new medium, the simplest solution is to find a way to simply put on your list of friends, tweet recipients, or copy Marilyn or another appropriately designated city representative so that they can do that archiving for you. So, it's not, none of this is to tell you that you shouldn't communicate using all mediums available. You should. You're elected because you should have opinions and you should communicate them with the public. That's fine. Just try to remember the need that they be appropriately archived. And the simplest way to do it is make sure that somehow Marilyn or whomever else might be designated by the manager for that purpose is copied.
Yeah, it was really brought out that all the rules have not been created because social media is moving so fast that they can't keep up with it. And so, you know, we just have to be careful. Second thing is, I spent quite a bit of time with the new city manager of Lebanon, Dana, and I, I wrote the name down and I left, it must have been.
The back.
I should know that because I'm checked, too. And really nice guy, really wanting to do a good things, but he, and I talked, and he says, do you ever meet with other jurisdictions? And I says, yes. I says, we've met with Lebanon before. And so, he really wa, would like to meet with us. And he says that the issues that we've had or have, he really wants to get them ironed out so that we can work together. Seems like a very, very good guy. And so, I'm hoping that we can maybe plan on a meeting with him. And he happened to mention that their new conference center is gonna be open real soon, which I saw was Friday or Saturday. So, he would like to, to host it there, so.
Yeah, we'd welcome, welcome that, so.
So, yeah. And then the only, the last thing is, in the Democrat Herald on the 7th of October, there was, I mean, this is just kind of ironic to me that on the 7th, they have all about the crime spikes and all the thefts and everything like that. And so, Monday night, we get robbed. And so, the only thing I could say is, what, you know, the tips that they say in the paper, you know, what the police have said, you know, to do and stuff, but I really encourage everyone to watch out for their neighbors. You know, if you see something strange, you know, we've gotta help each other out because after we had our tool stolen, we went to the different pawn shops the next day and the guy said that there's at least 20 people a week coming in looking for their stuff. And so, we have a real problem. And when it hits that close to home, and it's like twice in six weeks that we've been hit, so, you know, it's just a, yeah, like a for your information type thing, but the conference was excellent, other than we almost got washed away. It rained so hard that it looked like Multnomah Falls coming off the roof. No, but it, it was great. I just hope more councilors go next time because it is a very informative event.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Yeah. Bill?
I'm. Yeah, I'm, you're gonna hear my fairly regular complaint. And it has to do with my disability of being partially colorblind. And I want to point out, we had a discussion about our popular annual financial report. And there's pie chart in the back. I can see that there are blue and, and kind of a different blue and then kind of a purple slices of pie. But when it comes to looking at the little squares that define which slice is what, I don't stand a Chinaman's chance of picking this out. And on the other hand, we've got this pie chart that was in our, our regular budget report. And you label the slices as, thank heavens. There's two slices here that are kind of reddish brown, and I can't quite make those out. But what I would like to do, rather than just complain, which I do on a regular basis, I'd like to volunteer. If they're gonna put charts like this in the report, could I take a look at them and see if they're legible to?
Sure.
To the, uh, somewhere between 10 and 20 percent of the male population that has some problem with color blindness. You know, I didn't even know it was colorblind until I looked at a colorblind chart.
You know, Dick, and I apologize, you've, you've brought the issue up before and I, you know, I, I think the key is what you.
You can't tell if they're readable or not, or colorblind.
Well, no, no, you're right. And I, and I, but I think the problem is, is that we just don't remember to, to think about that issue, and we should. And, and we can do that. The other option, though, that might be simpler is just to simply, simply do what you suggested, which is to label them so that you don't have to. I mean, the color makes it easy for people who aren't colorblind, but that's all it does. I mean, if we, they could be all gray, you know, we, we frequently convert things that are in color to black and white, and that wouldn't be a problem as long as the information is labeled, so, like you described in the other chart.
Light change against light gray background. I can't see a tail.
Okay.
Some people say, oh, no.
I, I just fear that, you know, we do a lot of, of, you know, graphics in support of a big, pretty broad range of things. And if we will just remember to label, I mean, and that's something that several staff members have heard, so that we don't have to trouble you every time we, we try and create a chart, but also remember to try and make them understandable to, to people who can't see the colors.
Go ahead and hurt free.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make that, that known, too, as well, and appreciate you all.
I'll stick. Okay. I had a couple of things. Just one was a reminder that there's gonna be the open house at the police department this Saturday, October 12th, and that's at 10:00 AM. And this would be for anybody that's interested in wanting to be able to see the inside of the police department and see the needs that there is for building a new police station. Also, the, you know, Oregon Passenger Rail Leadership Council that I'm on is, we've been going through the process of finding the route, the best route that would be for passenger rail, you know, through Oregon. There's gonna be another kind of a community meeting that, this is, you know, through ODOT. And this one's gonna be October 15th, and it's at LBCC from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The last time that we had this meeting, the community ones, because they're going to several local communities, we had a council meeting that night, so there really wasn't much representation there. But one of our neighboring cities came out quite a bit, and they have been lobbying for the route to go to Corvallis and bypass Albany. So, the latest, the latest update now with the leadership council is showing, from the studies, is showing that the top recommendation is the UP line. So, part of it could also be the ONE crossing over to the UP, but all the way from Eugene to Portland. So, it's very, it's, it's in our favor. The way it has followed the screening criteria, the evaluation, has been, it's gonna be, the top recommendation is a UP line. But now, they're taking that recommendation out to the regional areas for public input, and that is where there will be some lobbying coming for not having that choice. I think there was, was it last weekend or the weekend before, there was, I counted 18 letters that came through my email for the whole leadership council on wanting to have the, the rail line go to Corvallis and bypass Albany then. So, I think if you can be able to maybe show up on the 15th or tell other people to be able to try to get as much, you know, support as we can for the, for Albany to be able to advocate for it to stay on the UP line.
Can you send an email blast about that?
I sure can. I can send you the information, too, from the state on this. So, I just had noticed it earlier this afternoon, and I wanted to give you a heads up, but I will send you out an email on it. So, so, I mean, it's, it's very positive that the screening criteria has worked in our favor, that the rail line would be coming through the UP line. We just want to make sure that a lot of, you know, we still have support locally and it doesn't get shifted over for maybe some more support of more, you know, advocating for another city, so.
Any possibility of getting support from the Chamber of Commerce to have the train stop here in Albany rather than Corvallis?
I would, I would presume, you know, if maybe.
I don't, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Yeah, I think they.
Although.
Where?
They were at the last meeting. I think there was representation from the chamber that was at that last community meeting. So, and Hoss has been to the meetings also. I think you've been to them, haven't you, Hoss, of the local ones? Yeah, yeah.
I think if it comes down to a competition between, between us and Corvallis, I think we have to be vocal about it, not just saying, just showing up and saying, well, we'd kind of like.
Yeah.
I think we gotta try and get people there.
Shall we carry signs and, and we shall overcome?
It, it shows the four, the four options. So, the UP line was on the top. The Corval, the Corvallis line was way on the bottom out of the four. So, it doesn't look very favorable because of that, because it's not, it's the cost factor of running over to Corvallis.
Old habits hard to break.
I know.
I was just gonna say, too, Dick, I mean, a couple of things. One, there's been a pretty exhaustive process already about which one of these routes would be most appropriate. And we have been represented at those meetings. I mean, we have a huge advantage in that the mayor serves on the statewide task force. So, she's.
How about the Corvallis mayor, is she on it?
No, no, she is not. And we have had good representation. There was a meeting at the library where they were, you know, you had to put like beans in a jar or something like that. I put my bean in. And the point is, is that we've, I think, what the mayor's, the, the good news from the mayor's report is that, first of all, it just makes good sense. It's cheaper. It's a, and it's, it's more logical. And secondly, we've had good support and had people there to articulate the arguments about why that line makes more sense than any of the others. So, I, I think we're, we're well set up for, for the future. And really, the role now is to kind of monitor and be prepared that should there be some heavy lobbying effort to try and change it, that we're, we're prepared to fight that.
Yeah, yeah. There, it ended up being two alternatives for Corvallis. The one would be to go to Corvallis and then switch on over to the ONE line. I mean, you know, coming from North Albany, hitting that line to the UP, which would bypass our, you know, train station. The other one was to create a new line, which would be hitting Corvallis at a train station, crossing over on Highway 34, following along Highway 34 on over to the UP line to come on up. That is where the cost was so much more, when you're trying to require, you know, acquire a lot more right-of-way to be able to put in new track. So, that was, that's where it showed they lost a lot of support because of that cost, you know, for putting in a new line. Now, the overall, the UP line, though, what is being recommended is new track along the UP line for passenger rail. So, that's kind of.
Dedicated track for passenger.
Yeah, so it'd be getting a dedicated track. That's kind of, you've got kind of like a short term, trying to work with the railroad, being able to get better timing, being able to add more service, but to be able to be working on getting another track dedicated for passenger rail. So, that's, that's part of the, the goal on that.
But maybe a heavy-duty track rather than, than white.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Okay? Any questions on that? So, that's October 15th, and I'll send you out an email. Okay? That's it that I had. Wes, anything?
Just a couple of items. I appreciated Counselor Johnson mentioning the new city manager in Lebanon. He and I met for a couple hours on Monday.
Good, good.
I completely agree with Bessie's assessment. Seems like a very, you know, professional and competent, good person. And we did discuss the idea about getting together for a meeting after, you know, he's had a chance to, to get situated. We've had some very productive ongoing discussions with Lebanon in recent months. And I think Mark, I give a lot of credit to Mark for his discussions with their, they have a city engineer now. I don't think they have an actual public works director.
Right. Engineering and utility manager, I think, is the title.
Anyway, they've been talking about some of the issues that have, over the years, that have, have been outstanding between us. But for all those reasons, I think relationships are good. I don't know that they were ever really bad, other than we just sort of bit our teeth on some of the issues regarding the, the water intake. But we are having those discussions, and I'm hopeful that we can have something positive to report when the two councils do get together the next time. So, that seems to be going well.
On him, he's also from Arizona, so we seem to be getting a lot of people coming from Arizona. They like it here.
Yeah.
Yes, and I do apologize to Chief Letanzio. In mentioning the report and getting the group together to talk about the buildings, I forgot to mention that the police chief probably would have some interest in that group as well, so.
That was police, fire.
Yeah.
Public works.
Right. Yeah. The other, another issue, just a reminder to the city council, you know, we've annually conducted an open house where we just sort of get together, invite our boards and commissions to come in, have a review of the year, give people a chance to come to City Hall and see what's been happening and give us their thoughts or what have you. That is scheduled for December 2nd and from 5:00 to 7:00, or is it 5:30 to 7:00?
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00, thank you. And we will be planning to do that this year again. And that's a Monday night, we'll be doing that.
We have a work session beforehand? There's not? Okay.
And then finally, I didn't go to the League of Oregon Cities Conference this year, one of the very few times over the last 30 years that I haven't gone because the ICMA conference was kind of jutted up against it. And so, I did go to the ICMA conference and, you know, for me, it's a good opportunity to get the ongoing, the continuing training that I'm committed to as a part of my professional obligation. I get about 32 hours and I'm committed to doing 40 a year. So, had some good sessions there and it was a good, productive, productive meeting, so.
That it? Okay? All right? Anything else? Yeah, Rich?
You said Chamber of Commerce. The chamber just did send out a email blast that announcing the government council had unanimously supported our November bond issue.
In the newsletter.
Yeah. In the newsletter, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if it hit the Democrat Herald or not. I don't know, I don't know if it hit the Democrat Herald or not.
If the Chamber of Commerce, they endorsed our police and fire bond measure for the November 5th, okay, yeah.
They did, unanimously.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Marilyn? Okay.
Your Honor, I have-
Marilyn, you did want to, did you want to update on that one property that everybody received an email? Marilyn had said that staff did check on it.
Oh, if you wanted to, that we emailed earlier today from Mr. Wagner regarding the property on 19th Avenue. We have received three complaints about that property since 2008. The most recent ones were in 2012 and earlier this year, both from Mr. Wagner. I don't know who did the 2008 complaint. All of those complaints were investigated. The property owner is the occupant of the house. He has complied with our instructions from our community service officers every time. He's been happy to comply. He has to have it pointed out to him what he needs to do, but then he takes care of it. He was contacted again today as a result of that email, which wasn't a formal complaint, but we took it as such. Our officer who's dealt with him before took pictures, spoke to him, walked around the yard, and said she would be back on Monday and things better be cleaned up and she fully expects that they will be.
All right. Good, okay. Thank you, Marilyn, for crawling up on that. Okay, and Mark?
Yeah, just wanted to make the council aware of some issues we're dealing with ODOT on Ellsworth and Lyon Street. With the closing of St. Mary's School, ODOT was evaluating the crosswalk at 8th Avenue, right adjacent to St. Mary's. And ODOT has a policy that they do not maintain, install or maintain crosswalks other than designated school crossings. And with the closing of St. Mary's, that is no longer, ODOT does no longer consider that a designated school crossing. We've pointed out that Central School is just a block away unless it's identified on Central School's Safe Routes to School program. ODOT's saying they won't recognize it as a school crossing. So if the city wants to maintain that crosswalk, which staff thinks there is significant value in that crosswalk, we also took this issue to the Traffic Safety Committee and they agreed. We will need to petition ODOT to keep that crosswalk and also commit to maintaining that crosswalk. So our first tack is to try to work with Central School and, and see if it's on the, their safe routes to school or if there's a way to add it so that it'll, it'll stay as is. If that doesn't work, we're going to have to, to, unless council gives us other direction, to petition ODOT to allow that to stay and take on maintenance of that. The second issue, as they were looking at that, they looked at the speeds on, on Ellsworth and Lyon. It's been posted at 25 miles an hour. And they said it's been, and as far as I can remember, it's been posted at 25. They said that's an incorrect posting, the speed should be 20 miles an hour. Our analysis with Ron and with the signal timing, we thought 25 is working pretty well and, and our preference is that it stays at 25. Again, we took it to the Traffic Safety Committee, they supported that also. So we will be asking ODOT to do a speed study and if the speed study does indicate that the average, I think it's the 85th percentile speed is about 25 miles an hour, then they will repost it at, at 25. So it's just some issue, I think they're actually taking down the 20 mile an hour speeds, or 25 mile an hour speed signs, but they're not going to post the 20 mile an hour speed signs until the speed study is done. So the reason I let you know is you may see some, some changes out there, you may get questions from citizens.
What does that do to our police officers? What are they enforce?
Well, I would, I think, that's a good question. It's probably 20 miles an hour, if that's what ODOT says it is, until a speed study says it is different.
But if it's not posted, how does anybody know?
If it's not posted, how's it know?
Then I believe it's a basic rule type of-
Clear blue skies, they can do 50, cool.
I mean, what, what is the further back this direction? What's the speed on Ellsworth going down this direction?
Well, I think the, there's a 25 mile an hour speed, I believe, is on the bridge or just on the other side of the bridge coming into town from the-
And nothing changes? If nothing changes, then nothing changes.
Yeah, I don't know the legal ramifications there.
Chief?
I would say it's going to still stay 25. I mean, there are, and I don't know the code here, there are rules that says if it's not posted, you know, usually residential's 25 and non-residential's higher than that, but I couldn't tell you, I'm not sure of the laws here in Oregon, but I would say if it's posted 25 and you go over, last time it was 25, it's going to stay 25 till there's another posting that shows a different change in the speech. If they just take them down, it's still going to be 25 all the way through.
Okay. So that's some-
Mark, is there, is there a school zone sign there? I mean, isn't there one that has the kids on?
There, I believe the school zone sign, there, there's an advanced sign prior to the crosswalk and one at the crosswalk. And what I recall was ODOT was going to take down the advanced sign, leave the one at the crosswalk until we get this issue worked out. I'm going off memory and I may have that switched around or wrong, but it is currently signed as a school crossing rather than just a crosswalk.
As it should, yes.
Mark, might it be possible to have someone on your staff ask ODOT to leave the signs until such time as the final determination is made? Because while Chief Latanzio was right that there is a default in state law, I believe the default for commercial areas is 35 miles an hour. And so if, if signs are taken down, so that you have a gap in posting, it's going to open a defense argument for people who want to go faster to say that this area is no longer specifically posted and therefore goes to the default speed. I doubt if, if ODOT's goal was in fact to reduce the speed, then they would gain nothing by seeing a loophole created which would allow people to go much faster. So if there's a chance of at least, hoping that there's a reason there that-
Yeah, we can, we'll make that contact. To what effect, I'm not sure, but you bet.
I understand.
Yeah.
They're going to change the timing on the signals?
That's, that's a question we have for them too, because they're operating now, I assume, under the 25 mile an hour, because that's what it's been posted and they've been, you know, their progressions have worked well. So, you know, that's part of our, our discussions with them.
This seems to me like the resolution that, at this point, is half-baked. We don't have all the information on the table, yet we're making decisions that may not be well-founded.
Right.
Well, I could see it backing up traffic over the bridge, too. It's just, you won't get as many cars through the signals, you could change the timing, then it backs up the cars on the side streets on first, second, third, fourth, or-
Exactly, yeah.
25, it always comes around onto Ellsworth.
Yeah, it's been a bit, bit frustrating for us, too. So I wanted to let you know because obviously people will notice. Our issues with ODOT have been interesting. As you know, we're going to be putting in some pedestrian-activated signals at our crossings on Santiam Highway. We have those two, and ODOT's saying they're not going to allow us to do that because they think it's going to increase crashes. So we're looking at ways to, to provide them some data that we don't think that's going to happen, so.
Is this the same traffic engineer that we dealt with on the Oak Street signals?
That, it is a, yes, a familiar name.
Jesus.
Relatively new to that assignment.
I believe so. I don't, I don't know the exact tenure there.
Anything else?
That's, that's all I have unless you want to talk about Dick Owen and my conversations with him.
Okay.
I'd like to, thank you for bringing that up because I know a friend of mine that teaches fifth grade, that the majority of her kids come from east of Lyon Street now, so there's kids over on that side. They're going to Central.
All right, anything else?
Here, I did have something I totally forgot about. I sent out an invitation today and, but I wanted to do this tonight on, while we're on TV, to invite you personally to the annual summit on homelessness on Wednesday, November 6th, here in City Hall from 9:00 to noon. This year, we're going to be focusing on the chronic homeless population and how to help them. We conducted a survey among that population early in September, actually looking for panhandlers primarily, to find out who they are, why they do what they do, how we can help them do something different with their lives. Weren't able to find all that many panhandlers because we believe of the new ordinances that, that council has approved this summer. But we did make contact with a lot of people who are in the shelters and others, and we'll have the results of that pan, that survey to discuss and also look for some pathways for getting help for, for people. It, it appears that what we really need to do is educate that population about what's available. The resources in Albany are nearly endless for helping people who need help. And so we're, we really are wanting more participation by the public because we need them to know what's happening and need some fresh ideas.
I did have somebody call me today and they were complaining about panhandling. And so do you know when the signs are going to be ready to go up about blocking traffic in state law?
That's a Mr. Shepherd question.
I believe those have gone up. You had given me the list and John Goldman, I think, a week or two ago had-
Oh, oh, have they put it out?
I have not gone out to inspect them, but I, he said that it was going to be done within a matter of days and that was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Have you seen them, chief?
I did.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so the person and I told them what we've been doing lately with those ordinances, they were very pleased, so. Okay, anything else? All right. With that, we have a work session, October 21st, and regular sessions, October 23rd. And we have Kara next week, next Wednesday, which would be the 16th. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.